Okay, good evening. This Planning Commission is called to order. I'd like to announce this meeting has been properly noticed and is posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Commissioner Goings, would you like to introduce our guest today?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. We have with us tonight the distinct pleasure of having a couple of Tiger Cubs from PAC 148, First Good Shepherd Lutheran School. This PAC is about thirty-five years old, and so I have two of our Tiger Cubs. They are first graders, aged six, seven, and so I'll let them introduce themselves. If you could stand up. Your name?
Joshua.
First and last name?
Anthony Goings.
All right, and next?
Aaron Benfamilla.
Alrighty. And, Mr. Chair, with that, they'll be joining us for a little bit this evening.
I'd like to invite Josh and Andy up to help me say the pledge. Everyone would please stand.
I don't know. Here, fellas?
Yep, right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, in uniform, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very good. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Present.
Vice Chair Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Goings.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Flankis.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand nine Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
I'll be abeying from that as I wasn't there, abstaining, thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post, motion carries. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, Items Seven and Eight, the applicant requests that these items be withdrawn without prejudice. Item sixteen, the applicant requests this item be withdrawn without prejudice as well. And Item seventeen, the applicant requests that this item be held in advance to the January fourteenth, two thousand ten Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, Commissioner Truesdale, your motion to these housekeeping items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that these items be brought forward and approved as recommended by staff.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries. We can now move to the public hearing items. We'll start with Item Number Six, Site Development Review, thirty-six, seven thirty-five. The applicant is the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. The owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's for a forty-two percent reduction in the floor area for a one hundred and forty-one space transit passenger facility at the park and ride. That's adjacent to the west side of Durango Drive at West Cliff Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the passage transit facility was reduced from two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five square feet to one thousand six hundred and sixty-nine square feet, or a forty-two percent reduction. The proposed major amendment is compatible with the area and meets Title Nineteen requirements in the previous approval. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, first half, is this item, is it just a phasing thing, or is this something that'll come back to us in the future, or is it just a redesign of the facility?
It's a redesign of the facility. The facility got smaller than originally proposed, and it was more than a ten percent reduction, which requires a major amendment. It'll be approved by the Planning Commission.
No other comments or questions, I'll make a motion for approval.
Very good. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that is final action, the absence of an appeal.
Six and seven have been withdrawn. We go to Item Number Nine, which is a general plan amendment, thirty-six oh seventy-four. General Plan Amendment, public hearing, the applicant is an owner, is the city of Las Vegas. It's a request to adopt an updated population element. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as you'll recall, last month, we introduced this item to you. The population element was originally drafted and approved in two thousand and three. What you have before you is an update of that item. Along with it, what we have done is, in addition to making some updates to the facts and figures and reorganizing the element, we've also instituted four recommendations, and I'd like to go through those with you very briefly. Our first recommendation is relative to estimating the city's population on an annual basis. This is something that's very important for us to do, and consequently, it remains as one of our recommendations. The second recommendation is to lead and participate in regional annual population projection programs. This is especially critical for the Regional Transportation Commission, to have those numbers available as they do projections for transit, also for the Southern Nevada Water Authority in terms of water projections. The third recommendation or implementation item is to lead and coordinate local census programs. As you're all aware, we do have the census coming forward next year. It's important for all of us to participate in that effort, as it does mean quite a significant amount of funding for the state of Nevada and for the city of Las Vegas. Those numbers are also important for us as we do our annual projections. So again, it's important that we do participate in that effort. And then finally, and probably most importantly, our implementation item number four is relative to monitoring population change on an annual basis, as it applies to level of service standards. This is most critical as we look at forward planning for things such as public services and facilities, looking at sewer capacity, looking at the provision of parks and other things. So as the city is able to budget for a growing population, we need to make sure that we do an accurate job of looking at how the city grows and then providing those services and budgeting for those services accordingly. Those are the changes that we are proposing to this update of the population element, and I'll go ahead and take your questions now.
Thank you. Just as a matter of question for myself, when we get the census data back, will the city take the initiative to break that information down into different commission districts so that we can go back and address some of the other master plan elements that are based upon population, like the park element that says how many parks per ten thousand, we talk about how many police stations, fire stations? I think that type of information's going to be critical in prioritizing our capital projects in light of the current economic situation.
Yes, we certainly do. We receive the information back in the form of census tract data, and then we take that information and then accordingly convert that into our different city wards or our different planning areas so that we can account for levels of service, as you were speaking, parks, public protection, fire stations, et cetera.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, a motion?
One question. When you talk about evaluating those updates in population going forward, is that something that you envision doing with the state demographer or from the census, or is it something that the city would incur significant expense on its own account?
No, it's something that we do on an annual basis currently. We do a population estimate in about July of every year. We work with the other entities here in the valley and with the county, and then we forward that information to the state demographer, who then will certify our population estimate. And so it's something that we are currently doing.
Okay. Then if there are no other comments, I'd make a motion, we approve the item as presented.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
Goes forward to City Council on January twentieth.
Item Number Ten is zoning, thirty-six oh ninety-three. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's from residential estates to undeveloped, residential estates undeveloped, public facilities, general plan designation, and new undeveloped park and recreational open space, general plan designation, and they're changing it to Civic at ninety-two hundred Tulley Springs Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this request would rezone the subject site to the CV Civic District, which will allow conformance with the existing PF Public Facilities and PROS, Parks Recreation Open Space Land Use Designations. The kind of uses allowed in the proposed zoning district, including the existing park, are consistent with the existing land use designations, and staff is recommending approval of this request. The Historic Preservation Commission approved the rezoning as HPC three-six-six-six-nine on twelve-nine-oh-nine. If denied, the current zoning will remain nonconforming to the existing general plan use designation.
Thank you. Public hearing's open. Anyone wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask a question. This is the area or the land on which Floyd Lamb State Park currently sits?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
And this action will in no way affect that park, and there's no intended change to the use of that land whatsoever?
That's correct.
Thank you. Floyd Lamb.
One question for staff. The RE portion that says not a park, what is that? I always thought all of that was part of the park facility.
That part is still owned by the state.
Oh, okay, but it's still, in essence, within the boundaries of the park?
It is within the boundaries, but it is not within the jurisdiction of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just briefly, I want to make sure, because I do have some residents that are a bit concerned. The chairman just asked, no change in what the use is going on there at all. This is just strictly to make it conform with the zoning. Is that correct?
Mr. Commissioner, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, Chairman, just to add one piece to that, that under the current residential zoning, by making this change, it will ensure further that it remains park and not available for residential development.
I'll move for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion post, motion carries.
Goes forward to Council on January twentieth.
In regards to a previous item, Item Number Nine, the general plan amendment, was anyone in attendance here that would like to speak on that item? Thank you. Okay, now we can proceed to Item Number Eleven and related to Item Number Twelve. Item Number Eleven is zoning, thirty-six, three forty-seven. The applicant owner is Justo Satteray from R1 Single Family Residential to PR Professional Office and Parking at two sixteen North Lamb Boulevard. Item Number Twelve, the companion item, is site development review, thirty-six, three forty-five, for proposed one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six square foot addition to an existing one thousand two hundred and ninety-six square foot office, medical with waivers of perimeter landscaping buffer standards to allow buffer widths of zero feet along the north perimeter where six feet is required, zero feet along the south and east perimeters where eight feet is required, six feet along the west perimeter where fifteen feet is required, and zero feet between the sidewalk and the back of curb where five feet is required adjacent to arterial streets. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the current site consists of two lots with an existing one thousand two hundred and ninety-six square foot medical office on the north lot and one thousand four hundred and eighty square foot single family dwelling on the south lot. The two portions are proposed to be redeveloped into one site with a three thousand two hundred and fifty-six square foot medical office connected by a new addition. Rezoning of the south lot to PR Professional Office and Parking is required to accommodate the low intensity commercial uses and will conform to the existing old office general plan designation of the site. The proposed site conforms to Title Nineteen Commercial Development Standards and Parking Standards, but due to the limited size and existing layout of the site, landscaping cannot be provided to Title Nineteen standards. The requested waivers and exceptions necessary for the development are typical of other similar conversions, therefore, staff recommends approval. If denied, the site would remain as is, and approval of a new site development plan review would be required prior to development of the site. Please note that one protest and one letter of support have been received for each of these items since publication.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on either of these items, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I would like to see the landscaping plan and the parking plan on this. Is this available? My concern is this.
I don't want this thing to turn into something like we had along Jones, where there's just been conflict after conflict.
Absolutely.
So we want to get it right from the start.
Thank you. Okay, is there a representative of the applicant here? Does staff have the landscape plans?
Send your backup.
It's in the backup. Do we have any thing that we can show?
They're currently on the overhead.
Uh-huh. Very impressive. Please.
I'm wondering if perhaps we can trail this until there's an applicant present, because I know the staff is recommending approval of this, and in spirit, I don't have a problem with it, but I am concerned about some of the signage, which doesn't look legal, and I would like to hope that there may be some conditions that we can put on this if it moves forward for approval, so perhaps we can trail it. If the applicant doesn't show up, my suggestion would be we might have made it.
Okay, let's, no one seemed to have any objection with that suggestion, so let's trail Items Number Eleven and Twelve and move on to Number Thirteen. Item Number Thirteen is a variance, thirty-five, five forty-three. The applicant owner is Stephen Kern to allow a rear yard setback of eleven feet where fifteen feet is required for an existing two hundred and ninety-two square foot addition at four thirteen Meadow Valley Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the addition at the rear of the residence was constructed without a permit. The addition encroaches four feet into the required fifteen-foot rear yard setback of the property. Staff finds that the variance is self-imposed in nature and recommends denial. Please note, we have received five letters of support after publication.
Thank you. Public hearing's now open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Bill Shake, four hundred Meadow Valley Drive.
Thank you, and you are representing the applicant?
Steven Kern, yeah.
Thank you. Well, what do you have to say about him building the thing without any permits?
It wasn't built, it was built twenty-four years ago. He just purchased the house this year, earlier this year. It was a foreclosure.
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?
My name is Deborah Cook. I live at forty-one sixteen Meadow Valley Lane. I am a resident in that neighborhood. I would like to recommend that the city, or, you know, that the city accept the request for the variance. I see the house, I've lived in that neighborhood for almost ten years. That structure has been on that home in the entire time that I've lived there. It's not something that's new. I feel that by this being accepted, I know that the current owner is working with an architect to bring it up to the current code standards, and I feel that it would just make our current housing residents in that area a little bit nicer, perhaps bring our property values up or help maintain what we currently have. In this market, it's kind of scary, so I think it would help out.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Commissioner?
Please.
I visited your property today, actually, at four thirteen Meadow Valley Drive, and what struck me about it is it was one of the nicest houses on the street, and I walked in the back and I couldn't get through because you've got it all blocked off, so people can't walk in and out, and there's construction going on, and it's my opinion that you're doing nothing but exactly what this young lady says, is make the neighborhood look nicer and better, and I thank you for that, so you'll see my support on this project this evening.
And I do have a rendering of the architect's thing here, so.
Yeah, and you can see that the work is being done, and it's really improving the neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other points of discussion? And it's apparent just that when the project is completed, it will have to be brought up to code and inspected, and so everything is going to be in accordance with the applicable ordinances and codes that we have. Okay? I think we're ready for a motion if there's no further.
One quick question, staff. The applicant or the representative indicated that this was a foreclosure, and they're trying to do things, and it seems like this is not the first foreclosure we're going to see with some of these kind of problems to it. Is the, does staff have any kind of program to kind of make it known to these homes that are being transferred under foreclosure? Because I get, I believe there's a ton of them built with unapproved improvements, and the people buying them are looking to clean them up quick and put them back on the market, and it seems like we catch one or two out of a hundred. So I mean...
The process for that is complaint-driven, so if we receive a complaint concerning an illegal structure, code enforcement does go out and then address that, and then part of that is either to bring it into compliance through a variance or to remove the illegal structure. We currently do not have a program to be proactive in this in regards to foreclosures. We do occasionally see from time to time title companies who will not issue the title if there's an illegal construction, and we have seen a few of those in the past six to seven months, and those items have come before you on those, if you recall.
The reason I bring this up, there's an interesting location near the planning office down on Fourth Street, about a block south of your office, where they read these foreclosures every morning, and it is like a circus out there. There's probably sixty people out there in lawn chairs and computers, and they're bidding on houses, they're turning over a lot of dollars at the grief of this market, but it seems to me that it's a, there should be a process of making notification during this single transfer point to try and correct these issues. That would, to me, would be proactive rather than waiting for complaint-driven, but I don't know if that's possible, and I just raise as a comment.
Certainly worth staff considering it as something to look into and maybe come back and discuss with us, the probabilities of getting involved in something like that.
If I may, Mr. Rankin's aware of this, that some cities do have a program where upon the sale of a property, there is an inspection required so that at the time, that there's a negotiation between a buyer and a seller, there's an opportunity to make those corrections. Such a program was investigated here some number of years ago, and the notion was turned down, but through these minutes, it will certainly be brought up again for discussion.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to stick with my motion for approval, because I think this is one case where it is not a hardship for the neighborhood. In fact, it's enhancing the neighborhood, and so my motion is for approval.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
We're working on it. Aaron's helping me out here.
Motion carries.
And that will go forward to City Council on January twentieth.
And we have a late-arriving Tiger Scout that would like the opportunity to introduce himself.
Want to introduce yourself, say your first and last name?
Clark Hubner.
Mr. Clark Hubner is with us this evening. Welcome.
Thank you for helping us. We now move to Item Number Fourteen and companion item Number Fifteen. The variance, Item Number Fourteen is a variance, thirty-six, five seventy-seven. It's the applicant is Nevada Hand Inc. Owner is the city of Las Vegas, is to allow one hundred and seventy parking spaces where two hundred and twenty are required on the south side of Owens Avenue, approximately eight hundred and fifty feet west of Main Street. Item Number Fifteen, companion item, is site development review, thirty-six, five seventy-six, for a site modifications for a previously approved maximum one hundred and fifty unit multifamily residential development. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the design changes include the removal of all the three-bedroom units and addition of twelve, twelve two-bedroom units. Parking requirements then would have decreased from two hundred and forty-four spaces to two hundred and twenty-eight spaces. However, the applicant has submitted plans that removed eighty-one of those spaces, resulting in the need for the variance. Staff finds the variance to be self-imposed, a hardship, as it was due to a design item, and it recommends denial. The applicant is requesting an exception to allow thirty-seven trees within the perimeter landscape buffer, where a hundred and three were previously approved and are required. The total trees on the site are a hundred and eight required, and they're providing forty-three total trees. Staff finds that these waivers and exceptions are not in conformance to the approved original plan, nor within Title Nineteen, and recommends denial. Please note, if approved, conditions, staff would indicate that conditions number seven and eleven can be, seven and eleven can be deleted as they do not apply.
Thank you. Public hearing's now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. On behalf of the applicant, we have...
Good evening. My name is Bob Feibleman, and I'm with Nevada Hand, located at two ninety-five East Warm Springs. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of the parking reduction. We believe that the reduced count will more accurately reflect the demand for parking and allow for more landscaping and open space. This apartment community targets lower-income residents with reduced parking requirements, mirroring our two-year-old development next door called Horizon Crest. At Horizon Crest, we provided the required number of one hundred and thirty spaces. Our most current count of parked cars was thirty-seven at seven p.m. and forty-five at eight p.m., which included five of our management staff. This leaves eighty-five spaces, or sixty-five percent, unused virtually all the time. Also note that Horizon Crest is ninety-eight percent occupied, thus the counts are reflected of an economically fully occupied apartment community. Based on this information, we project that the Skyview Pines development will need approximately seventy-three parking spaces. We're providing a hundred and seventy, where two hundred and twenty-eight are required. Therefore, our request for reduction of twenty-five percent is a fraction of the sixty-eight percent we could reasonably request. However, we always prefer to err on the side of caution and are providing more than one space per apartment. Again, please note that the lower-income residents do not have the financial capacity to typically own and insure two or three cars, and in many cases, they do not own even one. Therefore, by granting the parking reduction, we believe the community is bettered by having more landscaping and open area. The reduced parking count will more, be more than adequate by any reasonable measure. I'd just like to show you how, if you look at the, the plan that we have in front of you tonight is the lower one, it shows a lot more green area than the one that's above it, which was the originally submitted plan. So there's actually a lot more landscaping, and what we've done is reduce a lot of the double-loaded parking areas, I'll point to them, and reduce those to single-loaded and widen out the buildings, or the landscape areas, spread the buildings apart. I've also got a comment on Condition Five regarding the landscaping. We know that there's a reduced number of trees, but we believe that when we get the final landscape plan, the landscaping will be quite significant, and that we'll work with staff and make sure that they're okay with it. On Condition Sixteen, we'd like to mention that because of the site visibility restriction zone, the entire frontage does not allow for tree planting between the sidewalk and the retaining wall. This is one reason for a reduced tree count. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name.
Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Nevada Hand has three complexes near my area with reduced parking, and they don't even come close to even fill in half of it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on it? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. This is not going to be a senior housing project like the other... This is not going to be a senior housing project like the other hand projects.
Correct. This is family.
This is, this is family, but you took out the three bedrooms and 13 of the two bedrooms? 12?
Yes. It, it's mostly one bedrooms at this point.
One bedroom doesn't sound very family-oriented, does it?
Well, yeah. This, this project was, you know, we responded to an RFP and all, and all those issues are essentially approved and we would have to go back. You know, I mean, I don't think we're able to change that sort of thing at this point.
Sir, with the reduction of the parking spaces, how did that affect the handicap parking? I don't see that you're, are you still provide, are you still within the code?
Yes.
And you're providing how many?
I can point out.
I think nine was the number as well.
There's, there's five. I mean, we can always add more, but there's five right here.
I thought I saw nine.
You're correct. There's nine.
There's nine? And those won't be affected by this parking?
No, they're shown. This is the revised one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more questions?
Please. Any more questions? Seeing none, ready for the motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval of item 14 VAR 36577, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
Josh, click. Click on the yes. Click on the green.
Post. We now moved item number.
Thank you.
Item 15.
That was 14. Okay, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve item 15 SDR 36576, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
As amended? Were there not amendments?
Yes, as amended.
As amended.
Comment before we vote, I'll be just, question. We're reducing the parking so we have more landscaping. Why are we reducing the trees at this point? I guess I, I lost that in the shuffle here.
Well, the count's based on a conceptual landscape plan and we're still working on developing that based on the approval of, of this. I can guarantee you that the, the landscaping is going to be quite nice.
Well, I, I understand you guarantee it'll be nice and, and that's good. We, but what I'm getting at is we, I don't disagree with the idea of reducing the parking and I, and I appreciate that provides for more landscape area. But when they figure the tree count and considering that they're going to have more open space with trees.
Okay.
Why would we, why would we reduce in the trees so dramatically from what the count was approved originally?
Well, a lot of the trees, you know, it's hard to put them on the perimeter because you have retaining walls that are holding up the Salvation Army proportion. So, by the time you have a footing in the curb, it's, it's not really a great place to plant a tree right here. So, much of the tree, a lot of the trees are going to be moved into this area. So, I, I think the overall tree count is going to be there as opposed to the tree count on the perimeter, which is what I believe staff's comment addresses. It's not the overall tree count for the entire site, it's just the perimeter.
If I may.
Please.
The consideration for the commission, condition number five that reads that the allowance for the 37 trees within the perimeter landscape area where 103 trees are required might be considered to be written to indicate that, to allow the 37 trees within the perimeter where 103 are required. However, the plans shall be amended so that the entire site does accommodate the 103 trees.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to the applicant?
I kind of hate to get pinned down to an exact count on the number of trees because we may pick trees that have a 40-foot drip line.
Unfortunately, that's the only way our code lets us count these. I mean, so.
Well, we're asking for a reduction in the tree count on the perimeter and the, the trees that are in infill, you know, if, you know, some trees have a 40-foot span as opposed to a 20-foot span. So, putting them 20 feet on center as the ordinance requires on the perimeter doesn't always, you know, accomplish any more than having trees 40 feet on center. So, again, you know, I'd rather not commit to the tree count. I'd rather be able to work with staff and make sure they're satisfied with the ultimate number when we're done with the final landscape plan.
I'm, I'm not comfortable just with it's going to look good. I, I would suggest that perhaps you find a species of tree that would be more canonical than, you know, broad in the sense of, of the, you know, the, the span of the, of the foliage or whatever. I guess our concern is that it's, if I'm not mistaken, it's a, it's a lower income or a modest income complex. And I think we're very sensitive to the fact that we don't want to create ghettos and waiting. And one of the ways that you can minimize that is to provide sufficient landscaping. I think our staff would be more than happy to work with you on how to achieve that, but I think we have to have a standard. And perhaps there's some flexibility in there, but I'm not comfortable with simply saying that the final product will look good. So, I, and as I understand it, this is a major modification. We already went through this before and I'm concurrence with Commissioner Trusdale. I'm more than happy to provide the relief for the parking, but I think we're compromising the integrity of the design by suggesting that the landscaping should be minimized.
Well, I'll, I'll commit that we will strive to get that count and continue to work with staff on that, but you know, it's, you're asking for a very specific number and.
But that's what our code does.
But we're, but we're asking for relief from the required number of trees on the perimeter.
That was exactly what the director addressed when she said.
We're willing to give you the relief on the perimeter, but we'd like to pick it up. We want to pick the count up on overall site and feel that gives you some ability to be creative and still be economical in your development.
Okay.
And, and, and I can support that, the way the, the condition was read by staff, by Director Wheeler.
And I can as well.
Okay. Then it sounds like we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move again for approval of item 15 SDR 36576, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions, as amended.
Chairman, real quick.
Please.
Did, did the applicant agree to the condition that Planning Director Wheeler read into the record?
That's what I'm just getting ready to. Ask him.
If, if you're asking if I've agreed to the total number of trees to be spread over the entire site, yes, I will agree to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Trusdale.
Thank you.
That goes forward to the City Council on January 20th.
Now moved item number 18, required review 36-373. The applicant is Regan National Advertising. The owner is Gateway Motel, Inc. Is for a 40-foot tall, 28-by-24-foot off-premise sign at 928 South Las Vegas Boulevard. Staff report, please.
The sign is incompatible with the current requirements of the Art 18B Arts District and the Las Vegas Boulevard Scenic Byway Overlay District and the Corridor Management Plan. Las Vegas Boulevard from Sahara Avenue to Washington was designated a state scenic byway in November 2001 and attained national scenic byway status on October 16, 2009. One of the requirements of this designation was the adoption of a management plan, a corridor management plan, which calls for the restoration of existing neon signs within the corridor and the removal or relocation of existing off-premise signs. As such, staff finds that this billboard is incompatible with those plans and recommends denial of this required review. Please note, we have received additional protests and letters of support since publication. Also, if approved, staff has reviewed some photographs and we can delete condition number one as the bird deterrents are, are located on the sign.
Good evening.
Like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Mr. Brown, you are who?
Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. Please keep in mind that our sign was up before that Las Vegas highways, you know, came into effect. In addition to which, our sign does front on Charleston. It does not, you know, front on Las Vegas Boulevard. And you've been kind enough to approve this review, I believe, I think, five previous occa, five previous occasions, and we'd appreciate your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. At the city council meeting yesterday, something came up that really got to me. We, I know that this is a signed review, but there is a billboard company along Valley View there that has sued to take it to the Supreme Court, I believe, with Mr. Lewis there, that the signs are not special use permits, but they go with the property for perpetuity. If we lose, if the city loses that case, we can't consider that they're going to come before us every five years and if we don't like it or if they're not maintained it or they're not inspected or whatever, they can be taken down. If we're going to do, if they win this case, when we consider a billboard, we have to consider that billboard being there 25, 50, 100 years because it goes with the land. There's no way that we can tell them to go away. This has really got me bothered because this is a whole different ballgame now. Right now, we're there every five years, we say, "Look, you know, you're not keeping it up, you know, we've got some control over it." But if this happens, and then what is the street going to look like in 50, 100 years? We don't, you know, if I see a real problem here, folks, maybe Mr. Lewis or Dr. Lewis can, can address this, but, but I'm real alarmed at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Dr. Lewis care to respond or just stay out of this particular discussion at this time?
Well, I'd like to say a few words just so I can earn my money for the evening.
Okay, that's, that's, that's understandable.
But there's, there's really not much for me to say except that we've got a required review before you. This has been before you a number of times. It will be before you again and it's within your discretion to approve or deny this particular item.
Thank you.
Do you get paid by the word?
I just got $10.
Anyone else in attendance care to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion. Just to kick it off, this, these signs have been there some period of time and I, I probably have done this in the past and will do it again. As the character of the community around these signs changes, more so than just paperwork and ordinances and scenic byways and, you know, the arts district designation, but the actual character around the community, around the signs changes, having this sign around even longer may become an issue. So, just to alert you on that, but because it's been there for so long and precedes the, the referenced arts district and the scenic byways, I, I am going to support it though.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
I had heard where the motel site is stalled. Mr. Brown, do you know if there's any immediate effort to go forward with construction? Because I'm not sure the, the building permitting process has begun on that.
I don't believe it has. I think they're trying to get their financing in order and they hope to have it in the near future, but you hear that a lot these days.
Right. And, and I would concur with the chairman that at some point, it may not be appropriate. My thought is that if, I think it was Holiday Inn Express was, went through the, the zoning process and was approved. But I would suspect that once it goes through the building entitlement and, you know, engineering and all that, that it would take a few years to probably complete, assuming they get financing. So, my thought is that at some point in time, probably within the time when this review would expire, the situation may have changed. But as it is now, you know, absent they're building something out of the ground on that site, I would be more than happy to recommend approval for this, for that review period, until that review period.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. My motion would be to, to approve agenda item number 18, RQR, the review period of, I think it's 36373, subject to the if-approved conditions, which I think is a three-year review. Is that correct, Mr. Wheeler?
Correct.
That would be my motion.
As amended.
As amended. As amended, yes.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
City Council, January 20th.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy Hanukkah. Mr. Farlow, while we share your concerns with the court case, it's inappropriate for us to comment on it because it just is inappropriate. So, I'd be glad to talk to you after the meeting about it, though. Item number 19, special use permit 36-551. The applicant owner is Oakbrook Realty and Investments, II LLC, for a proposed 1,079-square-foot bail bond service at 321 South Casino Center Boulevard, Suite 105. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a bail bond service at the subject location within a vacant commercial center located in the Office Court District of the Downtown Centennial Plan. The Office Court District is the primary area of legal and court-related professionals' functions. Proposed bail bond service is compatible and harmonious with the existing and surrounding land uses and is located within close proximity of the courthouse and other juristic, judicial facilities found in the Office Court District. As such, staff is recommending approval of the request.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please approach the microphone and.
Kevin Plonster, the applicant from 1,000 Royce Boulevard in Oakbrook Lakes, Illinois. We're the agent for the Oakbrook Realty Investments.
Thank you. As the applicant's representative, would you, are you accepting the staff conditions as presented?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Please approach the microphone.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Is this in the art, arts district?
It is not.
It is not. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no discussion, I would concur with the staff that it's adjacent to the courthouse and an appropriate place for a bail bond service. I would like to follow their recommendation for approval and make a motion for approval of agenda item number 19, special use permit 36-551.
Before we, do we, do the bail bonds or this building have specific sign requirements or is this going to be, the windows are going to be shrink-wrapped with 50, I mean, oversized signs? Because it is a fairly nice streetscape and I'd hate to see it turn into something it isn't, but.
No, no, no. We're looking to keep it looking like a first-class retail parking garage.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
Council, January 20th.
We now moved item number 20, which is special use permit 36-552. The applicant owner is Oakbrook Realty and Investments, II LLC, is for proposed 1,624-square-foot bail bond service at 321 South Casino Center Boulevard, Suite 110 and 115. Staff report, please.
The proposed use is going to be located in the Office Court District of the Downtown Centennial Plan. The Office Court District is the primary area of legal and court-related professional functions. Proposed bail bond service is compatible and harmonious with the existing and surrounding land uses and looks, is located within close proximity of the courthouse and other judicial facilities found in the Office Court District and staff recommends approval of the request.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Like turn the matter over or open it to the public.
Kevin from Oakbrook Realty Investments.
Name, name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kevin Plonster, Oakbrook Realty Investments.
Thank you. Accept the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
The same location?
No, it's next door.
So, we were just going to put a row of rows.
Just two, two is our maximum there.
You wouldn't operate under one or you got two different clients?
We've got two different tenants that are signing up, two different bail bonds.
They want, run different deals?
Pardon?
They have different deals, pricing? I mean, there's.
I don't know that much about bail bonds because I'm from Chicago. We don't have that sort of thing. I assume there's.
You don't have any bail issues in Chicago? You take care of them another way?
They have a dock.
Well, they don't have bail bonds, man.
They have bail bonds.
Now, the public hearing is open. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and continue discussion by the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, the esteemed Mr. Rankin has pretty much said it all. It's adjacent to the courthouse. I think it's an appropriate location, and my motion would be for approval of Agenda Item 20.
Okay. Before I call for the vote, I would, you know, caution you that the signage needs to be attractive and look like something. It's tough to define, because what might look like something to you, it might be different than what it looks like to me, so...
Well, I think if we ever do anything, well, I'll meet with some of your people in planning and get their opinion.
Yeah, you need to get, be in compliance with the sign. Thank you. So, motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
Also, Council, January 20th.
Okay, we now move to Item 21, Special Use Permit 36558. The applicant is Hyem Gabey. The owner is HS Family LP for a beer/wine cooler off-site sales establishment within an existing 5,166 square foot arterial establishment at 316 Fremont Street. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale use will be ancillary to the existing retail store located at the subject site. Along this portion of Fremont Street, the sale of individual containers is consistent with previous approvals in the area and is a common business practice. The request meets all minimum special use requirements and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner within the existing retail store and with similar uses along Fremont Street. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the item, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
My name is Albert Gabey.
And you're the, you're the owner?
My brother is the owner. I represent the business. We apply for beer and wine, off-sale establishment, and we did it, you know, to increase the sale in the store and the business.
There are six conditions of approval. Are you accepting those conditions?
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, made a site visit through there, and it's a very well-maintained store, so I have no problem with it. I'll move for approval of Item 21, SUP 36558. Subtle staff recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. Now move to Item Number 22, Special Use Permit 36564. The applicant, Marcy Carmen Suora. The owner is Bonanza Sunrise, LLC, is for a beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow 195-foot distance separation from a school, where 400 feet is required, at 4,800 East Bonanza Boulevard, Suite Number 9. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this request is for a special use permit for a beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant. The proposed use is located approximately 195 feet from a school, which fails to meet the minimum special use permit distance separation requirement of 400 feet from a protected use. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the request. If denied, the restaurant will be unable to serve alcoholic beverages. Please note that four protests and one letter of support have been received for this item since publication.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Do you want?
Yeah.
Your name is, yeah?
I'm sorry, somebody speaks Spanish?
Oh, in English?
Mari Carmen Soria.
This is not going to work.
[laughing].
Would you, no, I think we have a volunteer coming up. Permiso?
Hi, my name is Pilar, and I tried to translate her, and she asked for the permit for wine and beer.
Thank you. What, there are seven conditions. Does the applicant accept those seven conditions?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I get some clarification on the school? I, I don't fully see where that school is, or where this is in relation to the school.
My name is Pilar Valera.
On the overhead, the school is located on there. The, the restaurant is located in the middle of the shopping center there. If we could go to the, I don't know if we have the notification map, but it does locate the restaurant. It's located approximately right in the middle of that shopping center. And the notice does go from, the separation is from property line to property line.
Oh, it's property line separation, not the, not the location of the establishment.
Correct.
If we go from the location of the establishment to the school, do we have a distance on that?
While we're waiting for them to, yes, what is the name of the applicant, first and last name, and your first and last name?
Mari Carmen Soria.
And yours?
Pilar Valera.
Thank you.
Can, can I, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, maybe, while you're...
Please, we have a question.
Yeah. Can you ask the applicant, she submitted a letter that says that she's asking for a special permit, says, "I own a Mexican restaurant. Two years ago, I asked for the permit, but it was denied. And because I don't have the permit, I cannot sell alcoholic beverages." And she goes on to say that it's hurting her business. Did she apply to the city for the permit to sell beer and wine at the Mexican restaurant two years ago, and it got denied? And maybe the staff can help me with that, someone? Mr. Rankin, or perhaps the applicant? Maybe you could ask her, did she apply two years ago for the permit to sell beer at that restaurant, and it was denied?
Yes. She, she asked for the permit, and she's alive.
And Ms. Wheeler, are they allowed to simply make a new application, or is there a time parameter?
If I may, Chairman and Commissioner, I don't see an application for an SUP, so they must have come in, put in the application for the license, were told that they needed the special use permit. That application did not come forward, and therefore, it was a denial in that respect.
So it was never heard before the planning commission, before us, or before the city council, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wasn't, wasn't denied, it simply wasn't heard?
Yeah.
It wasn't requested, okay. Do we get an answer as to the distance from door to door, rather than property line to door of the school? It would be a guesstimate at best, we know.
Mr. Chairman, bear with us. Our computers are running a little slow today, and we're working on it for GIS here. We'll have it here in just a moment.
Well, we'll just chat a while. What kind of food do you serve? Mexican? Do you have, what's your specialty?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also a little reluctant. I, I want to ensure that whatever we do, that the applicant understands, and I'm a little concerned about the language barrier, so...
Accompanied by someone that's helping her, so...
Mr. Chairman, we have that number. It's 400, from, from the restaurant to the school is 470 feet.
Thank you.
From the actual location to location.
Approximately.
Within, within two feet.
And, and this would allow beer and, and what type of cell, what type of alcoholic cells would be allowed, allowed and pre-approved this?
Uh, this SUP would allow for beer and wine and wine coolers to be served in conjunction with a meal. You, you couldn't just order a beer by itself.
Ready for a motion?
I think, I'm not sure we...
Does the applicant understand that?
Did we open the public hearing? I can't remember.
Yes, we did.
Okay. What I would like to do through you, Mr. Chairman, if it's agreeable, I would like to recommend approval of the SUP, but with a one-year review. Ms. Wheeler, is that something that we can achieve?
Um, this is, Chairman and Commissioner, this is an SUP, so if you wish to have a one-year review after the issuance of the alcohol license at this facility, either at a public hearing or administratively, that would be an appropriate condition for you to add.
I, I, would, can you maybe explain that? What I'd like to do is recommend approval, but in one year, we would look at it again and make sure there's no problems. So, if there were problems, she could lose the special use permit to sell the beer and Okay? So my motion would be for approval of the SUP with a, with a one year, one year, a review in one year.
Mr. Chairman, we're, the, looking at the conditions, we can delete Condition Number Three. It would not apply in this case.
And if I may, to the maker of the motion, do you want the review administrative, or at a public hearing of the planning commission?
I am okay with it being administrative.
Then the condition would be, there shall be a one-year review after the issuance of the business license for the sale of alcohol to be handled administratively.
Yes. That would be my motion.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
And with the deletion of Number Three.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through the interpreter, I want to, does she understand, ma'am, over here, that she is to sell the beer or wine with a meal?
Yes.
And not separate?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please post.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
And that will go forward to the City Council on January 20th.
Now move to Item Number 23, Special Use Permit 36571. The applicant is Summerlin Enterprises, Inc. The owner is Patton Rampart, LLC, to add a thrift shop jewelry use within an existing 900-square-foot jewelry store at 2235 North Rampart Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the, the proposed use will not alter the square footage of the existing tenant space and will not modify the existing condition of the site. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent and surrounding uses, and it meets the minimum special use permit requirements for, for this use. Staff does recommend approval. Please note, we did receive an additional sort of support and additional protest after publication.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. If anyone wishes to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Lawrence Minden, owner of Summerlin Jewelers. I'd like to say that Summerlin Jewelers is currently enjoying our 16th year in the same location. We're a family-owned and operated business, which began in Las Vegas in 1962 with my father, Bernard Minden. My grandfather operated jewelry stores in Canada. We are proud members of the Better Business Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce. We are a full-service jewelry store with thousands of items of gold jewelry at fair prices. We repair and sell estate jewelry and antique watches. We have two watchmakers, one gemstone cutter, and three custom jewelers who work off-premise, and one bench jeweler who works in the store. We service all of Sun City Summerlin residents. A second-hand license will allow us to purchase used jewelry, gold and watches, from our loyal customers. There is a much-needed alternative to residents not desiring to visit pawn shops or hotel room buyers for their jewelry needs. Thousands of residents in Sun City Summerlin have built a relationship with us over the years and appreciate our honesty and loyalty. We respectfully request approval of the special use permit before you this evening, as well as approval of the privileged license application currently at the City of Las Vegas Licensing Department.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is Teddy Russell, V. Currently residing in the Mayor Pro Tem's ward. Obviously, this is not my neighborhood. However, everything that the gentleman said is exactly correct. I have a great deal of knowledge about the jewelry business, having designed and had created and produced jewelry myself. I think it's an excellent value-added service to the customers, so that they are not only not inconvenienced, but they are not caused to suffer, let's say, compromised situations at the pawn shops and hotel room sales, whatever that might be. I heartily recommend approval, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed. I would just like to ask the applicant, are you accepting the four conditions of approval that have been submitted by staff?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed, so turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I move to follow staff's recommendation, approve Item Number 23, SUP 36571.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
It goes forward to the City Council on January 20th.
Item Number 24 is a special use permit, 368588. The applicant is Vegas Bale. The owner is Jack E. Kason and Maxine Kason Family Trust, for a proposed 3,288-square-foot bail bond service at 3325 West Sahara Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds this use not to be compatible or harmonious with the surrounding area, as it is located within approximately 80 feet of a single-family residential subdivision. This use would be more appropriately located in the proximity to the Office Court District and the Downtown Centennial Plan area, where judicial and correctional facilities are located. As such, staff does recommend denial of this project.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishes to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Jason Respec, owner of Vegas Bale. I just want to bring to the attention that I have many offices downtown, other bail bonds offices, and I'd just like to address, we've grown out of it. We are expanding. I've been in the industry about 15 years. Vegas Bale has been open about five, five years now. We have grown out of it, and we need something bigger. We're more professional. We just, we wanted to bring it to a different level, and that's kind of the building that it is. Used to be a bank at first, then it was a cash place, and it fits all of our needs that we need. As far as the residential, it is on Sahara. There's a lot of professional offices on Sahara, so it, it's on the corner on Sahara. And the residential, I think it's a little bit further than 80 feet away, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
I just want to say, although I'm sure you have outgrown the area, it, this just does not belong in the neighborhood. You have it where you want it, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and although you are facing Sahara, behind you is a lovely neighborhood. And I just will have to follow staff's recommendation for denial, because this isn't something that belongs in the middle of the city. It belongs in downtown and where the jails are, and I find that if we approve this, we'll do nothing but have to approve another one and another one, so you will not see my support in my ward on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. This, this, is it your intent with this site to make this another place where people would go to apply for a bail bond? Or is it your intent to make this the administrative headquarters for all the other sites that are located more appropriately next to the courthouse?
This is going to be our corporate office, is what it was going to be. I do want to explain, when you guys say bail bonds, that's, everybody thinks of a bounty hunter. It's an insurance office. We deal professionally with people. My market is not the jail. I don't deal with the jail. I don't, my, my market is the, the church going, the family members. Those are the people that want to come to my office.
But you said an administrative office, sir, would be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week? I find that a little bit hard to... I find that a little bit hard to comprehend.
What, what do you mean?
Well, you're, you're suggesting that you're going to operate seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and that it's going to be an administrative office. I don't know any administration offices that are also like that.
When I say that, I just mean the corporate office for, that would be the, the main office for all my, all of my offices, where.
So you're just going to be working around the clock?
It would, it would still be, I mean, it would be a bail bonds, but I'm still going to keep my offices downtown as like sat, you know, a satellite office. It just, it's to accommodate my, my clients more. I mean, my business is out there. It's not downtown.
So you're going to be open seven days a week, 24 hours a day to accommodate your administration, your administrative offices out of this location on Sahara?
I don't understand what you mean.
Well, you're asking to be open seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
That, that's just the industry. The bail bonds is open, that is open seven days a week, 24 hours a day. That's why that was written that way.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for the applicant. For this location, would you be willing to limit your time, your hours of operation, so that they are like most other professional businesses where you just open at eight or nine and you close at five or six? Are you willing to do something like that for this location? Not, not all of your stores, but just this one?
Um, you know what? I'm willing to do whatever it takes to work with you, but keep in mind that two buildings down is a cash, a check-cashing place that's open 24/7, and that's just two buildings down. It's the same, in the same area. So I don't, I, I mean, I would, I would be willing to do whatever it takes to work with you if you guys were willing to grant that for me.
Will there be a bail bondsman on this premises to do bails as well as the administration? Or is this strictly?
Yes, yes.
So the answer is yes to that question.
The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No, I'm ready for a motion.
Do you have a comment? Oh, I'd like to make the motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial of this application. Thank you.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
We can now return to items number 11 and 12, which were previously heard. We heard the staff reports. We opened the public hearing. Does that need to be repeated, or can we just? No?
No. No, Chairman, we can just reopen the public hearing now.
David Rodriguez, 2441 Old Forge Lane. And the first thing I want to do is apologize to the commission for, I had a little car trouble, but that's not your problem.
No problem.
I'm here speaking on behalf of Dr. Sateray. If there's any questions that you, that the commission would like to ask, I'm willing to answer.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the illustrations that were provided in our backup show what looks to be what was previously, I'm assuming, a single-family residence, and it looks like what was once the garage door is where they've stenciled in the name of the medical office.
Okay, that is on, that is on the site that's been already been approved. That's the site that, the site that is, that is already zone PR.
For 220.
220, right. Now, we are, they did hire a civil engineer to do a revisionary map, but that's, that's being done as we speak, to put these two lots together. On the single-family home residence that we're trying to get the rezoning, if you look at the elevations, there will be, there'll be windows there to match the rest of the, rest of the.
This is, I'll explain my issue if you can bear with me. All throughout the city and specifically in my ward, we've allowed single-family residential to be converted to professional and office, and it's probably appropriate in most cases. But they still, for the most part, border or are bounded by other residential. And when we allow that conversion, for whatever reason, we've not been very good about ensuring that they don't become blighted through banners, obnoxious colors, yellow, green, blue, strobe lights, neon in the windows, stenciling all over the walls, and none of them meet the code requirements, and all of it, I think, is a visual blight. But the city, I think, is only complaint-driven, as the staff had just indicated. And my issue is that we keep approving these over and over again, and within time, they become rat holes through copy all over the buildings. And I'm looking at where you've, they've stenciled on the building, and then the other one, I think, is, they've written on there, and I think it can be done better. I think you can have an appropriate sign that's professional, that gives some people some direction in terms of what they're doing. And I don't know how to limit that. I don't know how to restrict it, and I don't know how to ensure that what we're creating and we're allowing a zoning which, for which there's no entitlement, and yet I can't, we can't seem to get people to comply with simple aesthetic concerns.
I, I appreciate and understand your concern. If, and I believe Dr. Sateray would have no problem of taking that, taking that stuff off. If you're concerned about the stenciling and, and that wall, see, the wall that has a stencil, that's going to be, that wall's going to be removed. That wall will be coming down because we're going to try to merge the two, the two buildings for, to enlarge as a medical practice. But the, the stenciling on the garage, that, I'm sure he had, he would have no objection of, of removing that.
What about things like banners? And maybe I can ask my fellow commissioners, do you share my concerns, and how can we, how can we approve this without creating a Pandora's box?
If the commission would like to put a stipulation on, on a condition as part of, you know, as part of it, that's, I think that'd be okay with Dr. Sateray. I don't think he, I, and I can't, I don't know what's in his mind, but I don't believe he's planning on putting up any banners or strobe lights. This, this medical, this is not open 24 hour, it's not a 24-hour operation.
I, I would simply echo support for the, for the comments, you know, and I, and I would invite you to drive one of my favorite streets, that's Jones, between Charleston and 95. And you can see that string of homes on the south, on the east side of Jones. Some of them have been converted quite nicely, and some are absolutely atrocious. And if I was forced today to make a subjective evaluation of your first building you've got here, I'm afraid it would fall in the atrocious category. That is, and then you're coming forward today, you're asking for all the landscaping to be waived. I could only envision that the first thing you're going to do is simply knock down those walls and pave the whole thing, so you're going to have wall-to-wall paving with, as you said, more attractive signage. But it hasn't been shown or anything and submitted, and so what you would be, would be starting off on the, on the really wrong foot. And every time we have somebody on Jones that comes forward and wants to convert their residential to office or some other use, we really talk to them very seriously about making it attractive and compatible. And so that's, that would be my position, is that you go over there and look at it and, and submit some plans that show that this one here along Lamb is going to fall in the attractive category, not in the not-so-nice category.
Well, if, if you're talking about changing the, the paint scheme, he, I, I do believe he would, he would have no objection to that.
I, that's why I think that you need to go over and look at it so you understand that I'm not just talking about the paint scheme. It's much more, much more detailed than that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I may, what, something I keep hearing concerns me just a touch, and I keep hearing him say, I believe the applicant might do this. Generally speaking, we need the person that has decision-making authority here, so they can either tell you they will accept a condition or not. So I, I would just, I would just suggest that you talk with the applicant's counsel and find out if he has the requisite authority to do what it is you're asking.
Yes, I do. So, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. We'll take your word that you have the ability to commit to, for the applicant and have the ability to represent him totally and make those representations.
Yes, sir.
But I was kind of looking at this, you know, how can this work? I mean, Jones is a, is a, an aberration, we thought, but Eastern has turned out to be even more exciting of a street. And I understand that there are some cultural, you know, perspectives here, but this is in Las Vegas. It has to be compatible. Just sign-painting fences and sign-painting buildings, the bigger building, bigger sign theory or, or the bigger pinata on the property, it's not an acceptable architectural or planning thing. We will wind up with a retail professional corridor that really blights itself before it even gets going. And that's a real concern to me. And, and it tells, and it's represented in, in the application before us. I mean, when you say, well, we've already got this building and it's painted with Clinica, Medica, Bill, okay. I was on a roll for a minute, but, you know, I mean, but those aren't acceptable. And I would suspect the doctor has a, a level of standard he wants to work with as a medical professional. I know the medical professionals within this clinic probably have a standard they expect. What I'm seeing here doesn't meet the standard I expect from a planning perspective. And that's why I won't support this application as it sits before us, because I, I'm concerned without the right, agreeing to the right landscaping on these buildings, since they're perfec, they're this quote, PR, I think it's the one most appropriate place where I can sit here and say, the color scheme is a big part of my decision. And.
Well, if I, if I may, Chairman Trisdell, we were, he was just, oh, he's willing to do, to change the scheme.
Everybody's willing to do whatever we ask at this point in the day, but it, it's a matter of what, our actions are judged by what we've done to date, and, and this is what's been, how it's been operated to date. And we have to see, if we're going to prove something further, what are we going to see and how is it going to be represented in the actions in the future? Otherwise, we will have multiple buildings down here, like the aberration out on Rainbow in the county, bright pink building right in a residential neighborhood to get your tickets fixed. I mean, it just, we owe the community a better start, and I owe the residents of this area a better decision, and based on that, I can't support what's before us.
I think what our problem is, is that when we, when we look at the photograph that's provided there with the, with the existing building, you know, I'm sure that's not what we envisioned was going to happen when someone comes forward and says, I want to convert this home and put a medical practice in there. No one envisioned it being bright yellow with four-inch box letters on the two-car garage front door. That is, it's, that is not an attractive presentation, and we don't want to continue that. And so I think that what you're hearing is a lot of the, the commissioners would like to see you perhaps go back and come back with a coordinated project that you want to present, to show something that's more attractive. And again, I would invite you to go take a look on Jones and see what more attractive looks like.
Mr. Chairman, before he speaks, I got a quick question here because I'm looking at a related item number. I agree with everything that the commissioners are saying here with the signage and about Jones and the way Eastern Avenue looks, but I've been kind of looking ahead at item 12, which seems to be a companion item to this, and I'm seeing a artist's rendition where both those buildings are merged into one building here, and I think that might dispel some of the issues that are going on here, because the, if you look at item 12 in the supporting documentation, they do have elevations showing a rather attractive-looking building. And so I don't know, maybe we ought to consider that and look at that a little bit before we start talking about stenciling garages and the like.
I, I, I hear you loud and clear, and you're, you're right, but I don't know if we can say that was, is this what has been approved, and we can hold them to that development scheme that shows that type of development?
If I may, yes. The, the elevation that is shown on the screen and that is in your package, that is the roof line, that are the materials, the, the, it's showing the composition shingles, it's showing the stucco, the roof lines, all of that is what would be required once the building was completed. The signage is not included. The signage would have to meet the requirements of code, which is that the wall sign is limited to 10% of the elevation. Is that correct, Mr. Anken? So that they would come in for a sign permit that would have to meet those requirements. I don't disagree with the commissioner that has the concern about enforcement. That certainly is a concern here and, and everywhere, but this is the elevation that would be required, and their signage would be required to meet code.
Mr. Chairman, through you, does that also mean that the, for instance, the, I'm not sure which property it is, the 220 or the other one that has the canary date palm, but I'm not showing that existing canary date palm on the elevations that have been submitted on?
We're trying to keep that at, we don't know the exact location. We have, do, we do have surveyors out there doing for the, for the, to do, to merge the two lots with the revisionary map. That's, you know, and when we say we're looking for like zero lot lines, we are trying to, we're just trying to get some kind of landscaping in the back there. And right now, I mean, and we're trying to get the parking where everything will smooth around, so there's no, there's no congestion. We are trying to, he's, he has purchased the, I do believe it's 216 North Lamb, and he wants to converge the two buildings. Like I said, the color scheme, we can change the color scheme, that's not, that's not a problem.
I'm showing the color scheme on the, on the elevations that have been submitted. The rendering is pink and yellow, or?
Well, that's what's, that's, that's what he, that's what he has right now, as his office right now is with the, is really kind of like a red roof with the, with the yellow, with the yellow stucco. We can certainly change, change that, that, that scheme. That is, that is not a problem.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may?
Please.
I, I'm becoming more concerned that this is premature. I, I hear lots of discussion about what might be, what, what you're willing to do. My suggestion to the applicant is simply this, go draw what you're going to do and then present that to us and say, here's the color we're going to use, here's the layout, here's where the tree's going to be, approve or disapprove. That's what we're.
Well, we do have a landscape plan, and we do have, this is, this is what we want to do. This is what we want to do right here.
So is that?
We have, there's a floor plan, there's a floor plan in there that shows, that shows what, what he wants to do on the inside, and we have, the, the parking layout is there, and the parking, we have it where it circulate, it circulates around.
So what we have is what you're going to do?
Yes, sir.
And the color, is it going to be yellow with the green highlights and the, and the red tile roof? Is that what we're going to see there?
That's what we're, that's what we're planning on doing, but we're not, we're not, that's not firm, that's not firm. We could, we could change the color scheme, but as far as the architectural building itself and the floor plan and the way it's, the way it's laid out, is that's what we want to do. Our, our, the doctor wouldn't have bought the property next, next, you know, to the south of it.
On the circulation that you have, it shows the exiting, and it looks like it's on another parcel. Is there a?
Cross, across accident agreement that we provided the staff.
Okay, so you have that.
There's also, we also have a, a letter from Republic saying that they will, they will continue to pick up the trash in the street.
I didn't get these letters. I, I can't even get Republic to call me back half the time. I mean, I get, I get dumpsters aplenty on my properties, and nobody's picking up trash on the street, but, yeah, they don't even pick it up in the dumpster.
Mr. Chairman, one, I'm perplexed, you say that. Mr. Chairman, one, I'm perplexed, you say that the Canary date palm, which I'm assuming is about 40 years old and acclimated to the desert, you don't know whether that's, you think that's going to be cut down?
I, I know it is. For the record, my name's Michael Turner, 65, 40, Delrayo. Dr. Shadere Wood came here tonight, a substance, he has a heavy patient load, and, and I can probably either try and get him by phone if you want. I can try and page him. He, if, if the issue is, is the stent on the building and the sign and the colors, I think he would agree. I know him very well and I can speak on his behalf. He would agree to change that if you want.
And the, but you're saying that tree will be cut down? So I guess my question is, where, the landscape plan, is that submitted and the staff is comfortable with it?
Yeah.
Because I, I, I just want to be real clear about my frustration, and I think this, this commission shares it. We've approved these over and over and over again with insufficient landscaping and parking that is a challenge. And I guarantee you, I can show you 100 examples where they look terrible. And I appreciate that you're, that Mr. or Dr. ...
Shadere.
Shadere is, is putting some money into this, and I think we're all pleased to see the development. We just want to make sure that at the end of the day, it's, it doesn't look like Walt Disney puked all over the building and that the, and that we have landscaping that is sufficient and that it's attractive. And I, I guess what we're struggling with is how do we get there?
I can assure you that the date palm is gone. I know that for a fact because I sold him the home and he's moving it. So I guarantee you that.
They're not easy to move. Is he harvesting it out of there?
I know he's making arrangements to get it moved.
Can it be moved to another portion of the property?
With the design that we have currently, I don't believe there's room. Where?
We have, we're putting...
Has it been sold? It, it costs like 15, $20,000.
He hasn't, he hasn't sold the palm. He plans on moving it to his personal residence. That's why he's sad.
It's a shame because the actual footprint for that palm is relatively small, and I think it would go a long way in enhancing the building. So we have no landscaping or some or...
Yes, no, we have, we have, we do have a landscaping plan with, with, with palms and 20, 24 boxes, and there is a landscape plan with a landscape legend there. And we're asking for, on the, on the east, we're asking for zero, but we're trying, we're trying, if you see, we're trying to incorporate, we're trying to incorporate some little landscaping in there. We have some trees on, we have a little finger over here at the end, and we're trying to, when we angle those.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we table this until next meeting and then we come back with colors and show everything?
Thank you.
Okay, is it good?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to follow the request of the applicant to hold this for two weeks. Or 30 days, whatever you like.
If I may, with the new...
System?
System. We really can't turn anything around in less than 30 days.
Okay.
It's just impossible to get it into the system.
I think it can answer some of the concerns I have.
Yes.
Okay, I said, can we, we work with staff with this or...
Yes.
Okay.
And just so that you know, I'm far more concerned about landscaping in front of the building that people can see, rather than just landscaping in the back that as soon as it's put in, you're going to let it die. I mean, I used to be in the business, I know how it works. You know, so put your money, put your money up front. You know, put it in the front of the building so that makes it more attractive.
That would be a ban until January 28.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, okay, motions? We need to make a motion and, okay, please cast your votes. Talking post. Motion carries. We now move item number 25, which is a text amendment, 36170. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's a discussion and possible action to amend Title 19.08 and 19.12 to provide standards for the temporary fencing of construction sites and vacant parcels. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this text amendment will do two things. First of all, it will provide standards for temporary construction fencing. Currently, Title 19 allows for temporary construction fencing, but has no standards associated with that. This will provide for those standards to be associated with an active permit and allow us to review those and process those accordingly. In addition, this, this text amendment will also address an issue regarding vacant lots and abandoned properties. Currently, our code does not permit chain link fence unless approved as part of a site plan review in order to secure property. This, this text amendment would add conditions to require soil stabilization on vacant lots and abandoned properties and allow for vacant lots or abandoned properties to use chain link in order to secure their parcels.
Thank you. Anyone in attendance who wants to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Mr. Rankin, is there a time limit on the, how long a fence can be up, like a year or two, or is there a review time?
In regards to construction fencing, that time limit will be tied to the construction permit. Upon expiration of that permit, then the construction fencing would need to be removed. Regards to abandoned and vacant properties, that is a one-year review renewal for each item, so if it does become a problem in the future, staff could of course then administratively deny the renewal.
Thank you.
Mr. Public hearing has been opened, and no one seemed to wish to speak on the matter, so I'll officially close the public hearing portion and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there, this policy is enacted in other municipalities here in the valley, and I think there should be standards for temporary fencing. But I hate to see this operated like some of the others where some county dust worker says, "Oh, we saw somebody walk across your property and the dust kicked up." And you get, you get cited, you've kept your property well-maintained, and suddenly you're spending thousands and thousands of dollars putting up temporary fencing, and it is not cheap fencing. I mean, I've just done two properties in North Las Vegas and one in Henderson for clients in excess of $100,000 with it, fencing. I mean, this, and it's not the property owner who's creating the issue. They can stabilize the dirt. Somebody, somebody drives on the side, on the property, it, because I don't want it to be an obligation to have to put fencing up on vacant lots as opposed to a standard if you elect to do it.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman.
But see, that's it. I mean, it's, who's, who's acceptable is that stabilization?
It's up to the property owner to, to offer that. This gives an option to fence, but it also gives an option to stabilize through other mitigation means.
But that would be to the satisfaction of the dust control at the county.
It is to the satisfaction of the dust control, the DAQEM of Clark County. It's to their satisfaction. They are one level of government above us.
And I appreciate that, but this is just a, it comes out to be a backdoor way of requiring property owners that have vacant parcels to do something that they aren't obligated to do today. And that's stabilization. Rain is, according to the county, rain is an appropriate stabilization, if we get a lot of rain. But we don't. You have vacant properties where people will drive on there on weekends, just pull off the side of the road, and suddenly the property owner's hit with expenses that are unachievable. I don't know if there's a solution. I've just, I'm, I'm beaten on the soapbox because I've been a victim of this, this type of ordinance already.
And the whole idea, if I may, if there's another option, but what we're trying to do is create an option so that it's either the fencing or the stabilization to give the property owner the option.
A lot of this...
If there's another one, we're happy to...
And let me tell you where I think this, this probably goes into effect, or some of these things happen. If you look at the east side of, in Councilman Reese's board, where you've got some large tracts of land along washes and some other areas, you'll wind up, people do dumping on the weekends. And here's a property owner that's done everything right, gets hit with $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 to have a private service go out there and pick up three mattresses and some roofing material that somebody's put there. The property owner gets hit with that bill, had nothing to do with it, okay? So it's not a victimless crime, it's a, it's a pretty, pretty extensive deal. And the first time, you can, okay, you clean it up and you go along. The second time, the first comment is, "Well, you can fence it." Well, that's a big check that a property owner may not have. And I think there's some ways that we can address the blatant dumping throughout the valley on these properties by working out some focused dump site, you know, basically construction drop boxes for specific weekends during the month. I think people, they're not going to drive to the desert, they're not going to drive to the dump as much as it sounds good, and you can take your receipt and you can go out there and go to any of the transfer stations. Too many of the people look at the first open lot and they dump there. So here's a property owner who's, who's been victimized, and then we're going to, the solution is, well, we're going to stop the dust and we're going to victimize him again by digging into his pocket deeper. I'm not sure if there's a solution, but in, in looking at vacant property owners, they are getting hit here. Because this isn't a graffiti issue, this isn't a lot, this is vacant, vacant lots that kids ride their bike through and suddenly the guy, the property owner's hit with a fencing argument. And it's not an inexpensive solution. So, I mean, I don't know if there's a good solution, but I felt it's, it's one of these that's very important to speak up on because I've seen property owners get hit with big bills for doing the right thing.
Staff certainly concurs that, that the idea here was to give an option. There is also, of course, and, and there's no question that whether it's an alley or a vacant lot or whatever where dumping occurs, it's not only a problem for that property owner, but also for the neighborhood. And so we're trying to see to give options to the property owner so that they can protect their property and also for the neighborhood so that that lot is stabilized and that they're certain that it won't become a campground or a nuisance, or a dumping ground, which the neighborhood doesn't want either. So the idea here was to create options for the property owner that would then protect their property and the appearance of the property to the neighborhood.
And I agree with what you're trying to do, but I, I, it's one of those things that it becomes a very regressive penalty for, not the property owner that's not, that doesn't care, but the property owner that cares just gets hit a second time. And there's no, there's no good solution. I'm just, I'm just voicing my concern because it's, it is what it is.
And we're certainly open, if there's a, if there's another path, then we'd certainly take a look at it.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're now ready to, we need a motion on this? We need a motion to accept if someone wants to...
The city attorney wants another $10.
Actually, actually, I only get 10 per day.
Oh, okay.
I already got my, my pay. So this is, this is extra words. If I may, it, it sounds to me like there may be some concern that the city is now saying that owners of undeveloped vacant land must, as a matter of law, either stabilize soil or fence. And I'm not sure that's the, that's the intent, and I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it is, that is the intent?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I stand corrected.
The issue is that we have, we have, because of this, the slowdown, previously, these vacant lots that were fenced or were laying fallow became developed. The construction fence was put up, the construction occurred, and we all moved on. But now these lots are staying vacant for long periods of time. And to the best of our research, and again, it's certainly not perfect, there isn't a perfect solution here, but either fencing it or stabilizing the soil at least gets this vacant land stabilized to the point that it is, it is not where kids play or campgrounds occur or where there are safety hazards. And the idea was to allow the option of one or the other to stabilize the lot.
And if I may ask this question, Chairman of the Director, is that, just so I'm, I'm sure, because I, I think I've misunderstood this, is that, does this kick in only after there's been some development upon the site, or would this be even for those properties that lay fallow with, with no development that has already occurred?
Essentially, it's an option, especially in the, where we, if we have a complaint, it gives us an option to allow the property owner an option with regard to stabilizing that lot.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to try to help clarify it for the commission. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one clarification. So we're not adding a burden to the property owners here, we're adding an alternative. Nothing more is being added, no additional burden.
The issue is that if you have a property in the middle of a neighborhood and it's become a location where we have, right now, there's no provision in code to leave that chain link fence there unless you have a current building permit. So the code does not provide for you to fence off your property with chain link to protect your property from dumping or persons going on your property. Your only option is a block wall. Mr. Rankin, is that not correct?
I'm sorry, I was...
Your only option is a block wall. You can't put a chain link fence up on a vacant lot right now.
That is, our wrought iron fence would be another option.
Okay. But unless you have a current building permit, you do not have the option of putting a chain link fence around your vacant property to protect it from dumping and, and trespassing.
Would the unintended consequence perhaps be a lot of vacant lots with chain link fencing for an extended period of time?
Either fencing or the soil stabilization.
Okay, that's, that's where I, I have concern with the issue. In the northwest portion of the valley, in the incorporated areas, there are several acres that are fallow. And a lot of times, people will park cars on those lots. A lot of times, you'll see young people out there riding motorbikes and things like that. And so we've asked the owner or required the owner to, A, either put in soil mitigation or B, fence the property. That is a fairly significant additional burden we're placing on the property owners, which oftentimes don't even live in the valley. And I, I, I like the, the side of the proposal that allows temporary chain link fencing, but the side that requires dust mitigation measures...
It's an or.
I, I, that's the point. You either do the dust mitigation or you do the fencing, either or. It's leave it like it is is not an option. So tomorrow, if we, if we were to pass this and the city council passes this, the next day, somebody could be out there in my end of town writing all kinds of tickets because the dust mitigation measures have not been in place. And then they go out and expend the money to put them in place, and we used to have, we used to do that first when county air quality just started off. And then all of a sudden, the next weekend, somebody drives out on the corner of the lot and parks their car illegally without permission of the owner. And now the person's mitigation is now being compromised because all you have to do is crack the crust, and then the dust comes right back.
And, and Mr. Chairman, let me clarify on that. This was in, this was in response partially to those citations issued by the Clark County Department of Air Quality and Environmental Management. Property owners would get a citation, would come to the city of Las Vegas looking to mitigate through fencing or through some other action, and we don't have an option for them. And that's the way those are generated. They're not generated by city staff going out indicating that your, your property's not stabilized. As, as, as you know, there are many, as Vice Chairman Truesdale indicated, there are, if your, if your crust isn't disturbed and you have an undisturbed site, the air quality, environmental control of the county won't write a, write a citation. But if it is disturbed, they'll come out and notify you of the disturbance and ask you to mitigate it in some means, either through requiring you to put out some substrate or water it or put up a fence in order to prevent it. When, when we've had some applicants come in, some property owners who want a fence with a chain link fence, and, and our options are limited, we keep, since cha, chain link is a prohibited material in most circumstances. This would allow an option to, for those that get citations from the county to, to seek another option.
And, and I, and I don't obviously want to tilt it. And, and I, and I don't obviously want to tilt it windmills in the county, but the fact is, the county is the arbiter of the Dust Act, which was, um, bestowed upon them by a previous governor, I believe, to do this. But it is a revenue source for the county. They are gonna go around and cite every vacant lot until they get a response. You either get, you get a chance to put up signs, which you can go buy. You get a chance to buy a fence, or you get a chance to water the property, or you get a chance to buy, um, a dust, a, it's a clay. Cleaning up the lots, there's only about three or four quote contractors that kind of get referred right away. Fencing is a minimum number of fencing contractors.
We can't allow that.
But, I want to, I want to get to the end of this one, because, and if you want to water the lot, to get a water truck, you have to go to the local municipality and pay a big water fee for a meter to, to tie into it. And it's, it's a one-time, it's a pretty hefty, then you need a business license for that. And, I mean, I can't tell you the, the gyrations. So after you go through this as you're a property owner and you're getting frustrated and you're, and you're kind of going through every step and you're trying to do a cost analysis of what, how you can mitigate the issues for something you did not do, for something you did not create, you own a piece of desert and suddenly you get a chance to improve desert. And it, the cheapest alternative and, is buy a fence. At $5 a linear foot, the city of Las Vegas controls most of the vacant dirt. We're gonna be buying fences for city lots downtown or all these lots that were used for temporary parking spaces for the rodeo that is disturbed soil. Nobody's gone back in and sealed that or, so we're gonna fence those, we're gonna, in essence, the county's gonna be down there, they're gonna come in and they're gonna wind up with fencing those lots. We're gonna have, we're, we're putting tons of resources into, to fencing for a dust issue that when the wind blows, the wind blows. I've lived here all, almost all my life. And no matter how stabilized the desert is, when the wind blows, dust blows. But we're, we're gonna solve that by fencing and that's, that's not the solution.
And if I may, we're open to another one, but we're not.
Have an intellectual debate with the county about overreaching on this ordinance. I think there's reasonable people that need to look at reasonable solutions, not just more fences, more fines. I mean, we're, we're gonna fine the property owner for not complying to some of these things because they can't afford to comply to them. The banks that own these properties that are in foreclosure are not gonna spend money doing it. So there's gonna be fines, just ratchet it up. And those are fines gonna go to the benefit of the county air quality. So.
So should we hold this for another 30 days?
I don't think, I, I mean, it is what it is, but I, I just think.
Let's put a fence around a motion.
Let me, let me say something then. The, what I'm hearing is that the city wants to make it possible for someone to put up temporary fencing. The other option is to mitigate or do nothing. Your gamble. Uh, the county would be the ones that would come in and elect to cite, something we have no control over anyway. So all we're doing is really providing an option that's not currently there. And that would be to enable people to put temporary fencing up. And that I don't have any problem with because the other side is out of our control. That's a county issue.
If I may, we agree it's a very frustrating issue, but right now, when you come to our counter, all we can add is additional frustration because we don't have an option.
And that's something we're very good.
I would, I would just add, if that's the intent, is just to provide an additional o- option to allow a chain link fence, I would recommend you go back and redraft this to say that instead of having this mandatory language in there. You know, I practice law, obviously, and a lawyer can always interpret that in about 15 different directions. So if you're, if your intent is just to say, we want to allow you to put up a chain link fence, put it that way in writing instead of this, uh, somewhat convoluted drafting of, of an ordinance.
I concur with, with Commissioner Flengas because it says, "All parcels of vacant land shall either be fenced or soil abatement." And I don't like that. That's, that's too, that's adding an additional layer of, uh, or an additional burden to the landowners. I can't support that. But I, I can support it's an option, but not where it says it shall either be fenced or, or dust abatement measures. I, I, I think that's too strict, too much of a burden on the, the landowners.
Well, uh, from, from the standpoint, uh, if, if they're required to, uh, by notice, uh, they would then have to abate it in some means. Uh, if, if they got a citation from, uh, the Department of Air Quality and Environmental Management, those citations indicate, uh, uh, and I, and I've seen them, that either you, you apply the, the clay or you fence it. And that's what it says. It says fence. Um, so if required to. I don't, I don't know, maybe the city attorney has some alternative language that would.
I don't know. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I don't know if you want to hear from a third lawyer on the subject, but, uh.
You have three lawyers, you get at least six or seven different opinions.
Yeah, well, at least. Well, here's, 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 here's a question. And then maybe this will determine whether or not we, the attorney's office ought to take a look at it again or not. I, if, if it, if it, it appears to read, it appears to read that if you own a, a piece of vacant land, you have one of two choices with regard to the vacant land. Is there, and this, here's the question, is there somewhere in this, in this ordinance amendment, an option that says, "Or do nothing?" Because that, that's what I hear the two lawyers on the board saying. It appears that this requires every vacant property owner to either do one of two things.
And perhaps we can, I, I would agree with the suggestion that maybe we can fine tune it so that it allows an option and not a mandatory.
We do not, if I may, we do not make the requirement, the county does.
And I think that you can, you can address that by simply being silent and just say, in the city of Las Vegas, you may put up temporary fencing. And not get too much fancier than that.
I, I guess my other question is, is it a problem? What, what brought us to this point?
We have many, many vacant and abandoned lots throughout the city that the neighbors have significant problems with.
And that, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
There are lots where there's kids riding bikes, where there's homeless encampments, where there's holes and rocks.
And I don't want to see chain link fencing all over the valley in every vacant lot.
So that's why there's the option for the soil stabilization or the fencing. That's.
I think we should hold this for a little bit more discussion.
Could be chain link fencing around every vacant lot. And I don't like that.
I think our, our emotions and our thoughts have been expressed and I think we've got somebody ready to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to hold this item for 30 days for more in-depth discussion.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
And hope that the city attorney's office would join in that discussion and maybe Mr. Flengas and Mr. Ellsworth, if they could give up $10 an hour, help you too.
Very good. Please vote and post, please.
January 28.
Okay. Mr. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I'll, I'll go ahead and meet with, with Doug and, uh, really read through this and talk with him about it and we'll get something back for you.
Very good. We now move to item number 26. Uh, that's the citizen's participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. Uh, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is Teddy Russell V., resident of Las Vegas. Please don't hurt me, but my opinion on the last is that it seemed to be, to me, that it was you must put fences up or you must have the abatement done. I agree with the commissioner who said, "When the wind blows, it blows." And we need something more simple here. Uh, I wanted, I was sent here because your ratings were going down and we need these to be brought up. Uh, a little bit more seriously, uh, I want to thank my proxy, Mr. Farlow. Uh, he is doing what he does so well and I saw him quite on fire at the city council. So I don't really have to be here, but it is my good pleasure to take this opportunity to wish all of you and the city of Las Vegas and Clark County the merriest of Christmas. A happy Hanukkah and Kwanzaa. Be blessed and be prosperous and healthy in the coming year also. Thank you very much.
And thank you. We share your sentiments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 Mark 19th Street. I'd like to thank the, the commissioners for all the hard work and the time that they've put in. I mean, we've been through another year. And a lot of people don't know that you guys only get $20 in a bus token for this stuff. And I mean, it, it's really appreciated, it really is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearings closed and the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much and happy holidays. Merry Christmas to everyone.